Good evening, the public hearing is called to order. Welcome everyone to tonight's public hearing. I will pass it to Maria to perform roll call for this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, roll call for tonight's public hearing meeting on Tuesday, December 2nd, starting with Dr. Michael Butts. Ms. Victoria Castro Corral. Dr. Megan Frankelwitz.
Here.
Dr. Ashley Hodge.
Here.
And Mrs. Thetiana Benya.
Here.
Thank you, we do have a quorum to proceed.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is item 1.04, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
My second.
Motion by Penya, seconded by Frankelwitz. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Agenda has been adopted. Next item on the agenda is item 1.05, public hearing for fiscal year 2025-2026 budget revision number two, and I will pass it to Dr. Portillo.
Thank you, Dr. Hodge, members of the board, executive team, and Roosevelt community. I'd like to call Mr. Polk, our Executive Director of Business Services, who will present our budget revision.
Thank you, Dr. Portillo. Madam President, members of the board, executive team, members of the Roosevelt community. We're revising our budget as we received a notice from Arizona Department of Education that we needed to, due to our decrease in enrollment. This was expected and anticipated. Next slide, please. Do you have the presentation? Sorry. One second. There we go. Basically, our original budget was adopted and passed in in early July. The state was late revising or issuing their budget, therefore we revised in September. And then in October, the state looked at our numbers and determined whether or not we needed to do a revision, which we were required to do, which is what we're doing right now. Move to the next slide, please.
Recording in progress.
I think our computer is not cooperating with us. That's not the presentation, won't they? Hold on one second. There we go. As you can see on the slide, our adopted budget was for $75,764,000. Our revision was for $75,984,750. This reflected a, an increase in funding per pupil. For revision two, we had a decrease in enrollment, which results in our MNO appropriations being $73,840,025, or a reduction of $2,144,725 for our capital. We had a reduction of $165,390. Any questions?
Any board members have any questions? No, this is our second time seeing it, so I think we, we asked our questions already. So don't want people to think that we, we are not engaged, but we definitely did ask questions prior to during our study session. Next item on the agenda is public participation. It looks like we do not have any requests for public participation. The next item on the agenda is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
My second.
Motion by Penya, seconded by Frankelwitz. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Are you ready to start our secular? Alright. Good evening and welcome to the regular scheduled board meeting. I call it to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is roll call. Maria, will you please perform roll call for this evening's regular scheduled meeting?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, roll call for tonight's regular governing board meeting on Tuesday, December 2nd, starting with Dr. Michael Butts.
Here.
Mrs. Victoria Castro Corral. Dr. Megan Frankelwitz.
Here.
Dr. Ashley Hodge.
Here.
And Mrs. Thetiana Benya.
Here.
Thank you, we do have a quorum to proceed.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the month of November. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
My second.
Motion in by Penya, seconded by Dr. Frankelwitz. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is anchoring the board and community, student outcome-focused governance, and I will share. The Roosevelt School District has been educating South Phoenix students for over 100 years. We are committed to creating better futures for all through education. As the largest K8 education system in South Phoenix, we strive every day to build strong foundations through authentic and innovative experiences that ensure success for every student by keeping student outcomes at the forefront of the conversation. And our entire board is committed to engaging and gathering meaningful insight. Let's review our vision. It is a community united to create better futures for all through education.
When we talk about student outcomes focused governance, we started this process, I don't know, is it almost two years ago now, two and a half years ago now? Student outcomes focused governance for us means that our focus is on improving student achievement and success through that research-based policy-making and decisions to increase our learning outcomes. And as you can see from this photo, this comes also with a lot of input from our community and from those individuals, both our students, our families, and our staff. Next slide. And that means that we put student outcomes and success first in every single decision. It's really exciting tonight because we're going to see a few progress reports. And that's going to really highlight, I think, how we're going to be able to do that and to keep the highlight on learning in our classrooms. This is a number of those behaviors that, that go behind the scenes. I'm sure all of our leaders know that this is key to making that, that possible and work. It involves both the leadership and the board having a common vision and goals, sharing values, having a consistent system for progress and accountability, making sure that we have student outcome goals, and then monitoring that progress along the way. As I noted, we're going to have some of those updates tonight. That also means that 50% of time in board meetings is spent on student outcomes. We adopt a budget that prioritizes adaptive goals and guardrails. Our superintendent evaluation is focused on adaptive goals and guardrails. And our board conduct is rooted in guardrails, community collaboration, and collective vision. And we have increased two-way communication regarding goals and guardrails. And we have some upcoming two-way communication at our sports banquet, so really excited for that. And that we have alignment from the boardroom to the living room.
Alright, that's my turn now. Okay. We have four adopted academic goals, and so the easy way to remember is 45 and 5. The first one is the percent of 4th grade students that score meets grade level or above on AESA. ELA will increase from 20% in August 2023 to 45% by August 2028. Just so you understand, all these increases are coming from, first, when we started, it was just August 2023, and it ends in 2028. So number two, the percent of 5th grade students that score meets grade level or above on AESA math will increase from 11% to 45%. Number three, the percent of 7th grade students that score meets grade level or above on AESA ELA will increase from 22% to 45%. And then number four, the percent of 8th grade students that score meets grade level or above on AESA math will increase from 12% to 45%. We also had established some board guardrails. And so our guard, and there's five of them, the first one is we're going to have a healthy board conduct and discourse. Our second guardrail, board operating procedures. Guardrail number three, student outcomes-focused decision-making. Guardrail number four, financial integrity. And our fifth guardrail, community engagement.
We've also adopted superintendent guardrails with guardrail number one. The superintendent shall not go without proactively sharing updates and plans on the budget or enrollment that will change the current landscape and stability of our district to stakeholders, including board members, students, parents, staff, and community members. Guardrail number two, the superintendent shall not fail to consider climate survey results to ensure a holistic approach to student development, addressing academic, social, emotional, and physical well-being, which includes after-school programming and wraparound services. Guardrail number three, the superintendent shall not allocate district budget resources in a manner that does not prioritize and support student outcome-focused goals, ensuring that financial decisions directly contribute to the academic and developmental success of all students. Next slide. Guardrail number four, the superintendent shall not fail to implement and maintain effective strategies for the retention and development of teachers, including promoting from within to ensure they have a positive impact on students as evident by data. And our last guardrail, the superintendent shall not fail to ensure progress towards ATSI and CSI status, which ensure that students with special needs and English learners and African-American receive equitable access to high-quality instruction, resources, and support services tailored to their unique needs to promote their academic success and overall development. So as a student, as a parent, student, community member, and a part of our staff, you can continue to join our board meetings every Tuesday. Oh, I'm sorry, every first Tuesday of every month. So thank you all for, those who are present here in person, for those logging in virtually, we appreciate you. Please continue to share your voice and give us your feedback, hold us accountable. We have shared our goals up on the, on the wall, so they're remember 45 and 5. And continue to build this partnership with us and collaboration, and we look forward to seeing Roosevelt be more successful.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is progress monitoring for academic goals 1, 2, 3, and 4, and I will pass it to Dr. Portillo.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, executive team, and Roosevelt community. We are going to present to you our academic goals 1, 2, 3, and 4. The order that we'll present in is 1 and 3, which is ELA first, and then 3 and 4, which will be focused on math. As a reminder, the board provided us feedback that we reflected on, and we were able to make some adjustments to our presentation, both our presentation and then also to our approach towards improving student learning. And we thank you for that opportunity to be able to take the month of November to do that work, and now we're here to present on all four goals, which is deviated from the, the original calendar that was approved. So thank you for that opportunity. And with that, I'd like to call Mr. Oviedo, who's going to present to us our data. Again, starting with number 1 and 3 first. When he's done, we, with presenting the data, we do have our, our inputs that myself and Ms. Gueston will make sure that we, we tag Tim on as well as getting a little bit of input there from Dr. Battle as well. And then, of course, we'll answer your questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Portillo, Deputy Superintendent Battle, executive team, and RSD community. Again, my name is Nick Oviedo. I am the Director of Data and Research for RSD. As, as you know and was just mentioned, we are looking at all four goals this month. January, also just looking ahead, will have a similar flavor as we look at all grade levels through the lens of STAR winter testing, which is happening this week. So lots of good data today, even more in January. Sometimes I call that our halftime data. But again, lots of good stuff to, for you today, and we're going to look through, as Dr. Portillo just mentioned, our ELA goals, which are 1 and 3. And this is first, our 4th grade goal. And again, thanks to Will Argeros in Community Engagement, he made a lot of the style updates to our board presentation that you're seeing today. So just a reminder, again, mainly speaking to those who are new or seeing this report for the first time. Goal 1 is looking at 4th grade ELA that by 2028 we will be at 45% proficiency. Board member Penya mentioned, easy to remember, 48 or 45 and 5. But that's actually now creeping up more on like 45 and 2 and 1/2 to Board Member Frankelwitz's comment. We have three interim goals. This is the only one where we have three interim goals. I'll say that goal 1.1, fluency goal, will be part of January. It's measured right now in December. That fluency goal, obviously, teachers are measuring fluency in their classrooms all the time, but as a district benchmark, that will be for January data. And then our other two, which we'll take a look at, are based on 2nd grade data. A reminder that our interim goals are based on 2nd grade data because that is, those will be our 4th graders in 2028. So keeping a close eye on how that cohort is trending as they move along grades. Okay, and this is not new. Something that we share each time is how we have done on ASA across the years. This was mentioned in the board member questions, but just to reiterate, 2023 data on this line graph looks slightly different, and that's because to stay consistent, we're using full academic year data, which is students who have been with us for the entire year. So when we look at our percent proficiency, we are just filtering for that on this line graph. And you can see, we, we now have on this line graph each of these will show that this goal is trending correctly but off track. This goal is on track or this goal is off track. And this is really a significant increase from 24 to 25. But still, this is off track because where we want to be right now is at 28%, if we're trying to get to 45% by 2028. Alright, the next slide in your packet is now this year's 4th grade cohort. So I just want to reiterate that the line graph was showing last year's 4th graders in their 2025 data. So this is this year's 4th graders on October STAR test, an assessment that was taken pretty much right after fall break. And just to draw your attention to the bottom right two cells, one, that the district's combined proficiency, so what, what I mean by that is combining proficient and highly proficient is 24.7. And the district is down 1.1% from August, when the students took the August STAR test, to now in October. The next slide is our progress monitoring of our interim goals. So again, these are our 2nd graders and how they are doing on the reading STAR assessment. So this is looking at, on the left, the left three bar graphs is August data and then our October data. So a increase of over three percentage points from August to October for interim goal 1.2. So we are naming that that goal is on track, that if that projection trajectory continues, that they will, 2nd grader will be at over 35% by the end of May. And our minimally proficient is headed in the correct direction, but not at a trajectory where we would say that they would get to 45% by the end of the year. So that goal is trending correctly but off track. That puts us to our key inputs, and for Dr. Portillo or Mrs. Gueston, I don't know if you want to, if you want me to pause here or keep rolling?
We'll do the second one and then speak.
Goal 3. Madam President, then I'll go to goal 3, and then the executive team will share inputs. Alright, goal 3 also, excuse me, also reading an ELA goal. So for goal 3, this is looking at our 7th graders, and in here, it's on the wall to the left, to my left, to get 7th grade students to 45% by August 2028. And for this goal, the interim goal, we're tracking the 5th graders who will be 7th graders by 2028. Overall, just as a reminder, we, we've looked at this now a couple of times, that this goal is also trending correctly but off track. 27.6% for ELA, certainly a big improvement, and a lot of steady growth there over the last two years. But still, where we want to be at 30%, so close, but not what we would call on track for this goal. Scrolling down to the school population proficiency. So again, this is the last year, 7th graders were at 27.6% on ASA back in April. This is now this year's 7th grade cohort and where they stand. And again, calling your attention to the bottom, that this represents a 2%, 2.2% decrease from August to October and a combined proficiency percentage of 20.1%. Alright, next up, for 5th grade interim goals for reading. This is really the one spot where we have seen the goal, at least for the interim goals, going in the opposite direction of what we would aspire to. The proficiency is down from August to October. The minimally proficient has increased from August to October. So we're naming that both of these goals are off track at the moment. Alright, and with that, that brings us to our key inputs for reading. I'll turn it over to either Dr. Portillo or Mrs. Gueston.
Give me one second, we're going to toggle screens here. Alright, good evening, Madam President, members of the governing board, Drs. Portillo and Dr. Battle, exec team colleagues, and district community. I'll spend some time, myself and Dr. Portillo, speaking to some of the key inputs for, for our reading focus goals. And one of the things I think I'll even just mention from the very start on all, all four of these screens, what you'll see is there are the inputs that we've had, that we've implemented since the beginning of the year, but then we've also tried to color code inputs that we have, we have pivoted to or added in. I will also tell you, this is not an exhaustive list, and even since we published this presentation, there have been additional steps that we've taken to address and respond to the data. But starting with goal 1, one of the most, like, key inputs, I would say, the keyest of key inputs would be our priority reading plans. Those were the, the plans that were focused on implementing how to use our HMH curriculum and implement science of reading practices. Those plans were designed through our partnership with Ashlock Consulting. And one of the big celebrations, when we see for the one interim goal where we are on track, being 2nd grade reading, when we look at our, our data, our learning walk data, what we see is that 2nd grade out of all K5 grade levels, 2nd grade had the highest usage rate of our priority plans, the highest rate of lessons that are on pace with the plans, and we see that being a tight correlation to then the results that we're getting there. So we're excited to, to be able to to support our other grade levels and doing, implementing those plans more effectively. One of the other key inputs is our, our program iXL. This is a key input that you'll see for all, for both reading and math. We've been utilizing this for intervention since the beginning of the school year, but one of the shifts that we've, we've made is instead of just having it drive students' learning based off of what their pretests are, that type of thing, of actually using, using the data, whether it's been from STAR or from, from DNA, to be really strategic in the skills that the students are practicing. So if we see gaps for these particular essential standards, teachers can assign lessons and practice aligned with that. And then one of the other things that, that we're also looking at with iXL is not just using it for reteaching things that have already been taught, but how do we all start to implement pre-teaching of skills as we look ahead to future essential standards? How are we using that program to fill gaps before we even get to first instruction? One of the other pieces that for, by the way, for some of these key inputs that you'll see throughout, we'll speak to them throughout the, the presentation. So if I don't speak to all of them this time around, you'll hear it shortly after. Along with the development and implementation of those reading priority plans, one of the other parts of our, our partnership with, with Ashlock Consulting is essentially quarterly learning walks where Ms. Ashlock and team will come out to actually visit campuses to, to engage in, for one, observing student or teachers implementing different components of the, the plans, but then also to model and exemplar of that. I'm going to hopefully, yes, okay. What, what we wanted to do is give you, show you some examples of these things in, in, in the work. So here you'll see this, this lady here in the center, she, that's Jennifer Ashlock, and along, so when she comes to visit, our instructional coaches and our principals get to participate in going into classrooms, observing teachers, learning what they need to be looking for in order to get, give them the right feedback to, to strengthen them. But probably the most powerful is seeing her come into our classrooms. She's never met these kiddos before, but she walks in and within a minute of setup time is leading that part of, of the lesson. And so the teachers, our team, coaches, principals get to see, get to see these plans happening with our kids and our classrooms, and that's been a really profound learning experience for, for all of us, I would say. Jump in because I'm talking fast, I know.
Well, what I, what I would say is that as she's modeling, she's modeling how to be able to to deliver this part of the, of the right, the reading priority plan. So she's able to model it with fluidity. So our teachers are trying new techniques, right, new methodologies, they're learning. And just like anything that you're learning, you're going to sometimes be a little bit robotic in how you're doing it, or it might take a little bit longer. So they are able to see her doing it. So they are able to see her doing it with our students and having success with our students. And that also lends a certain sense of credibility to the methodologies that are, that are being recommended or that are being expected that we implement in the class. So I think that's the power behind it. And then also having our principals be able to observe that being done with, again, fluidity with, with more, more of an automatic delivery, being able to stay within the timestamps of the lesson for that day. For them, it's an experience for them to be able to see what it should look like when implemented well. And then also, of course, we've been spending a lot of time training our, our district instructional reading coaches, but then also our campus instructional reading coaches so that they can continue to model. And we're not only depending on her, but at this part of our journey, she, having her come out several times a year, that's, that's very powerful for the learning of the adults.
Dr. Portillo mentioned this term timestamps. Within the plans themselves, they, you know, if, if any of you have opened up a, an ELA reading teacher's manual, you're going to see a whole bunch of information and not necessarily guidance on how to fit it in within your master schedule. So what, within those plans, there are specific timestamps. It says practice sets take 15 minutes. Then structured literacy is 30 minutes. And so just recently with our instructional coaches, we had them go to their schedules and for where, for instance, for this school, you'll see all of those, those grade levels, reading instruction starts at 8:30. So they blocked it out. So they know if I walk into the classroom at 8:50, if this teacher is on time with the timestamps, then they should be in the structured literacy, the phonics piece. So just getting really intentional with making sure that our instructional leaders know how to support that has been important to us. And then the final piece too, I won't say final, final, but one of the other key pieces. We're, we're doing learning walks differently in how we capture data. This year, having a district wide tool that every, every principal, every instructional coach in our district team, we use the same toodle, toodle, tool to capture data in, when we're out in classrooms. And so within that, this is just a quick snapshot along with other key look fours. We have ones that are specific to implementation of the priority reading plan. So these are some examples of what we're currently looking for. These will change in quarter three as we raise the bar in terms of how, the level of implementation in classrooms and what we should be seeing. With that, I am going to shift over to, I've got it here, this should be goal three. Yes. And so with goal three, when we look at our, our key inputs, this is getting into our, our upper grade reading instruction. And so for one, as you remember back in August, we, we shared our, our newly revamped district pacing guides and unit plans. And those continue to be a very important key input for us. But along with that, some of the other things that we've seen are as we looked at the data and what's working and where, when we see pockets of success, what are those teachers doing differently? One of the things that we noticed was that for one, students' time and text and their engagement with the text has, hasn't been what we need it to be. And so one of the most common strategies for not only getting them engaged in the text, but interacting with the text and supporting their comprehension skills is this concept of close reading. So we've embedded those, not only has our, our division through, especially Ms. Sander, provided additional professional development for all of our sixth, seventh and eighth grade teachers on close reading strategies. But we now for our upcoming units that are being developed, have embedded those strategies into the unit plans to make sure that it's very explicit for teachers, that those should be strategies that are used regularly during, during reading instruction. The other thing I will, and I'm going to shift over to my little images here. And this comes up not just for reading, but reading and math is in our curriculum maps. And you can see each of these, these, each unit is a different band of color or different color. For the most part, we've built in these flex days where especially maybe you get behind by a day or you need to reteach. And in our, in our pacing guides, for the most part, those flex days have been built in at the end of, of the unit. And we are now shifting that based off of feedback from our, especially our essential standards committee teachers, shifting those to happen throughout the unit. So that way, when teachers, especially with the work that we're doing with PLTs, which I'll speak a little bit more to very soon, that allows them time to, if they need to reteach, if they need to take a day in the middle of the unit to reteach in order to make the rest of the, the unit successful, they've got that in place and are able to do so. Anything you would want to throw in there? All right, so with that, we will, I think we're ready to shift over to goals two and four to look at our math data and then into our math inputs.
Sorry, you asked me. The only thing I would say is that where we, where we are seeing consistent implementation of the key inputs, we are seeing more accelerated increases. Where we're seeing inconsistency for a variety of reasons, there's inconsistent implementation. We do see a slower and more stagnant progress or even some decline. So one of the things that we are wanting to do as a district is to start to differentiate our support of the campuses. So as we're looking at campuses, of course, we'll, we're going to continue the key inputs and rolling out these initiatives across all campuses, but then starting to, to distinguish where we need to lean in more and what grade levels and which classrooms from the district office, at which campuses for what, for, for either reading or math. So we're differentiating our approach also of supports, analyzing what resources might be needed. And then also where we might need to push in to, to support the principal with accountability. And of the, of the different initiatives that we are, we're rolling out. So we are wanting to be as assistive to those principals so that as they're leading the work, as the instructional leaders on their campus, that we are also leaning in as another layer of support and accountability to ensure that we're helping them to ensure that these things are happening in each of those classrooms.
Thank you so much. I want to open it up to the board for questions since we're doing, you know, in ELA first and then math. And so I'll open it up to board members for questions.
Madam President, first of all, I just, I mean, I'm going to say this, the only way to the math piece, but I just want to like shout everyone out for the clarity of the trends, the analysis, the data, the next steps. I feel as a board member very confident that, you know, if I were to walk into a building or if I were to walk into a classroom, that I know what we're prioritizing and I know how we're addressing that. And I just really deeply appreciate the work, not only that has gone into revising the presentation, but I know that has gone into getting to this level of clarity in our plan for the sake of our students, for the sake of our team. So just like, I want to name just that in general and that we recognize that as a board. I think my two questions are more just around some other things and like how they're factoring into some of the planning, not so much are they, because I didn't hear them in the strategy, so just curious if they're factoring in. In the upper grades, I, because there was such a downward trend in some of the fifth grade spaces, how much has intervention or like below grade level reading factored in? I know obviously that's something we're monitoring in second grade because it's part of those measures. What does that look like or is that something that we've identified? Or have we said, hey, that is actually not our highest lever in, in our fifth grade spaces or middle school spaces?
Will you, will you say the question one more time?
Yeah, so I, I think my question was, aside from the tier one instruction, what's happening in the classroom? With that kind of downward trend in some of the fifth grade spaces, have we identified any additional needs for below grade level reading support, phonics instruction, things like that? Because we were monitoring that in second grade because it's a K2 grade level. It's not part of our interim goals, but is that factoring into the strategy somewhere that we're not talking about here? Or is that something that we noted as not yet a priority for us in terms of where we're sitting with the plan?
Sure. It's always awkward to say that hasn't been our biggest, most important lever at the moment. I think in K5, because we have to stay focused on implementing the priority reading plans and, and locking that in, that hasn't allowed us as much time to focus on the most highly effective reading instruction. We do see that as a gap and actually that's something that our teaching and learning team is, is working on is how, what type of, of additional guidance do we need to provide, you know, even as much so as like this is almost like the lesson plan for an effective reading intervention block, depending upon the resource that's being used. At the same time, so many, a part of going back to even just the prioritizing the implementation of the reading priority plans is that those strategies are built into it. So when we look at the different components through, through Ashlock, there are very almost scripted procedures that you do, they call them template cards and task cards that teachers learn like the difference between a, a tap and a point and a swoosh and a, don't quiz me on it yet. But those are strategies that then can be implemented just as much in a reading intervention block as they can during core instruction. So we do look forward to the guidance that we do provide and the, the additional structure and support that we do provide for reading intervention will certainly pull from the strategies that we're implementing during, during tier one.
Yeah, I would say another thing that we are doing to support with tier two, along with the clarity is looking at the utilization of our, of our software that we, the board has approved and adopted as our curriculum for, for intervention. So we're looking at that as well so that we can gain more insight as to where do we need to push in to provide more professional development? Knowing that even in the alignment of our, of our performance based pay plan, we need to push in, in supports for, for the use of iXL, for example, or Lexia or some of our other reading programs.
But just to clarify that then, and just to make sure I'm understanding, I think what I'm hearing you say is it's definitely there, we have a below grade level reading need, but that is not necessarily the thing that is causing some of that decline. And so we're, we're bringing those same strategies in, we're focusing on that tier one instruction. And simultaneously, we're providing those interventions, knowing that some of those grade level strategies are going to continue over into the intervention space.
Yes, definitely. And I think the other piece too, is even going back to one of the, the concerns that we heard from sites, especially getting into like fourth and fifth grade was teachers not getting adequate time to get to the point in the lesson where their time and text, where they're actually getting the comprehension. And a lot of that was because all the other portions of the, the literacy block were taking too long. So practice sets, instead of taking 15 minutes, we're taking 20, 25 minutes. And so all of a sudden, by the time you get to vocabulary and comprehension and true time and text, they've run out of time. So that's, that's even more of the backstory of why it's so important that our, our leaders know where these things need to, to be. And that, you know, you don't, for instance, I keep using the practice set example, making sure it's also clear, you don't have, yes, there are all these different, different slides, practice sets in the plans. You don't have to do them all if that's going to mean that it takes you over time and you're not able to actually get to the comprehension part. So those are, those are challenges that we've discovered that we're actively working to address that we anticipate will also help with, you know, the, the shift for the data.
Like goes back to the fluidity of the teachers being able to use these techniques and new methodologies so that the kids can actually get to the point in the lesson where they're applying the skill in the text, right? That's where the, the power is of them actually practicing the work. So that's why we're having our adults practice so much more so that they would be able to then develop that fluidity. And and it's part of the, the process of them taking on these new techniques. The reading priority plans are merging of the science of reading training that they've been receiving along with our curricular resources. So it's making it easier for the teachers to be able to focus on the delivery of that instruction as they're all learning how to be the, the best consumers of our reading materials.
And just one more thought question, Madam President. And I think you might've said this, Dr. Portillo, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. So for goal three, we saw a consistent kind of district wide trend. For goal one, it was a mix of schools that had increased, schools that had decreased. And I thought I had heard you say that in that instance, a school might then differentiate based on what their data looks like. Could you just go into that a little bit more and what that would look like for a school? To say, hey, like what does that process look like for a school to strategize and, and go through their data so that they're, they're responding to the data on their campus?
Yeah, so that the campuses are responding to that data, but what I was referring to was us at the district office responding to that data. So for us in the teaching and learning division, we are working through, how do we identify what that campus might need? How do we get their input, but also driven by our data, right? So the actual results of the students, so that might mean that we're leaning in with that team. And perhaps they need additional support and, and practicing some difficult conversations. Or perhaps they need support in problem solving, how to be able to provide teachers more practice time in those routines. So they might need a little bit more resources or they might need support with different type of staffing. Maybe they need us to lean in and, and support them in an accountability piece. So there's a variety of different factors that might be leading to that inconsistent implementation. But we at the district office will be looking at the data to trigger us as to where do we lean in more to get the input from the campus of what is it that the campus needs at that particular grade level?
Does anyone else have questions?
Very minimal question, but I just wanted to really praise you because that was incredible, seeing what you guys have been implementing. That's actually the sort of stuff that I was hoping we would be getting in the district. So I'm really happy to see that we're seeing even with Ashlock coming and giving those examples to those teachers. And then how you're making adjustments, you're making adjustments because like, okay, this isn't working out. You're getting feedback from the teachers, you're taking that feedback into consideration and making those necessary adjustments. Also seeing how we are orderly, we are, you know, setting standards of how to do things. That is going to make a huge impact on the progress and learning of the children. So kind of follow up with that because I didn't quite get it. So when we have Ashlock coming and giving the examples, how many, like how many classrooms is that? How, how are they observing? Because that, that really is just amazing. I want to go see it, to be honest with you, I want to see it, it looks amazing.
Sure. So she, she comes for a full week. So out of those five days, three of them are at, at campuses. So by the end of the school year, 12 of our 13 campuses will have hosted a visit and it really is a day long experience. I've got to, I really have to shout out our, our two ELA coaches because they, they create that schedule. So they're going to the school master schedules and our goal is while, while certain teachers that are selected, they get to have a whole bunch of people come into their room and watch them teach. And, you know, we're grateful to have courageous teachers that are, are doing that and willing to be vulnerable. But we also don't want to disrupt their day for this. So we create tight schedules of, you know, from eight to 8:15, we are in, you know, so and so's classroom to see this piece. And then 8:20 to this time, we're in this classroom. And there's that balance of, so for instance, our last visit was at Campbell a couple of weeks ago. And it was also a challenge because it was early release day. But, but we, I think we went into, I think we observed four teachers and then Ms. Ashlock modeled in, I want to say, three classrooms. On a full day, we're able to get a little bit more. But then the other benefit of it is, so we start the morning with just really grounding what we're going to, what we're doing and talking through like, what are the look fours? What, you know, as for, for our principals, they, they've got too many other things to be doing to know, to memorize the plans inside out. So they need to know, like for each of these different components, these are the things that you're watching for. And she's as, she's as, she knows her stuff and is, is so intentional down to like, you need to have a rug. If you are a K3 classroom, you have to have your typical A, B, C, D rug. And it should be offset from the screen. So when And it should be offset from the screen. So when the teacher, because teachers are using the screen like this to do the little tapping and swooping. And if they aren't, if they aren't strategically placed, they'll have five kids behind them where they can't see. So if your rug isn't offset, you're going to have your back to half your kids. So teaching us how to look for those types of things.
I would, I would add even in the sophistication of modeling for the teacher that they're doing, they're chewing gum and walking at the same time, right? They're they're looking at the they're doing the the screen, but at the same time, they're watching and observing the kids as they're producing these sounds. So that they are able to then also assess which kids are they going to have to be pulling in the future into small group? Because that kid is just mouthing. They're just pretending that they're participating. They're not really actually, you know, they're they're not there's maybe the the group is being pulled by Ms. Little Miss Tatiana is actually the one that's talking loud and the other ones are like half a second off just echoing her, right? So the level of sophistication that she's modeling is really what we want our teachers to get to, but right now they're just learning. And during that time, not only the principal hosting is observing, but we have multiple principals and instructional coaches in the room also observing and and learning how it looks like.
The the last thing I would just add to that too, in terms of the way the day looks is that that still leaves us upwards of about two hours at the end of the day to really debrief and to learn from just a renowned reading expert. So to ask the questions and to you know, to be able to get a lot of clarity directly from the source of the person who designed these these plans. So it really is an incredibly impactful experience. And to Dr. Portillo's point, in those three days, a third of our campuses go to each visit. On and then the other two days, one of the days she spends just with our district team, teaching us, helping us strategize next steps. And then the last day is a full day with our instructional coaches, continuing to equip them and train them on how to support that on their campuses.
Madam President, can I ask a quick follow up question? As we think about this longer term, and obviously, I know we're we're paying for Ashlock consulting. What is the longer term vision for the continuation of this? Is it to continue to have Ashlock consulting? Is it to be able to train the trainer and have our own coaches do this? What does this look like two years down the road as we think about the long term strategy here?
So, I mean, we'd love to have her as much as we can. No, but one of one of the great things that's been in place now is our two reading coaches have been deeply trained by her. Where not only can could they actually provide, when we did that five day summer reading academy, they're actually fully equipped to to continue leading that training in the future. And then beyond that, they also are really able to lead the work with our instructional coaches. They're continuing. I'm sure if you asked either one of them, they would tell you all the things that they don't know yet because that's who they are. But certainly, they, there's a huge emphasis partly of why we have that full day with her just for our district team to really equip, equip us and being able to support the the work long term.
Okay, so I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I appreciate the pivot and the thoughtfulness and the time that you all took in accepting the challenge. So deeply appreciate that. And I just want to name my question. I had a lot of questions and Saldes in particular, because it goes with Gargoyle number five. I just want to ask this question out loud. So looking at the fourth grade star data, ESS is 6.3 and English language learners are 5.4. It's significantly below the district's average of 24.7. What do we understand about the current root causes driving these gaps, particularly at campuses like Greenfield and Conchos where combined proficiency is under 16%? And what in the October data suggests why their progress fell compared to schools that saw growth?
So while we we have seen a lower proficiency than than the rest of the campuses that those two that that were mentioned right now, we do see those systemically that we need to increase our our supports and our proficiency in our ESS and and our EL subgroup, our student group, I'm sorry, not subgroup, the student group. We do have, I would like to say that based on last year's ESS audit, do you recall when Dr. Lilwheels came in? One of the biggest things that he shared with the board and with us as he debriefed, we debriefed with exec team in more detail is that we still have to, as a district, take full accountability for our ESS students and our EL students. So the performance of the students belongs to all of us, not only to our EL or ESS teachers, our ESS department. So I would say that that's one of the root causes is that we need to continue to own the performance of all of our students across all of our staff. And then also continue to ensure that that the, for example, in reading, the kids that will benefit the most from those routines being very well implemented are our ESS students that are struggling with reading and our EL kids that are just beginning to learn the language and the way the phonics works of our English language and reading. So though that is a tier one routine, it is really targeted and designed for kids who are struggling, which are our EL and our ESS kids. Anything else that you might want to add, Ms. Guston?
I mean, I would love to even just speak to a couple of the things that are in the works to help respond to that data because certainly like it's that that's that is our reality and we need to to acknowledge that. So when and also when when we get to the next two reports and I'll speak in more depth to our intentionality with our PLT meetings and our PLT protocols, one of the things that we built in is some really explicit prompts to ensure that when teachers are planning instruction or responding to data that that they are specifically thinking about about those two student groups and their their specific needs. We had a celebration just the other day, when one of our teaching and learning team members was out observing a PLT of seeing the team actually use the prompts on the protocol to to talk about those needs and what kind of scaffolds do they need to provide for for their students with disabilities?
And I think that was actually at Greenfield where she observed the the reading PLT.
I think it was Lopez. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Greenfield is a different good PLT example.
Yeah. Oh, it was a different grade level. Yes, that's right. But it was still the same. It was still the same use of the ESS and the EL protocol. So while we did observe it at Lopez at this, based on this particular question, thank you.
And then the other, for our EL students, you know, we we are really embracing our our curriculum for targeted EL intervention and our teachers have, we've received just such positive feedback about the quality of it, the ease of use. But we know that they they need additional support and through a couple of different funding sources, including our Title III, we're able to poll teachers for like full day PD engaging with the curriculum. And we did that this first semester and we'll actually expand it to to an even larger group for the second semester, so we can continue to equip them to 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 provide that that intervention in the most high quality fashion possible.
Just a quick follow up question there. Does the, do any of the SEI blocks overlap with the blocks where we're doing the learning walks with the reading consultant? Or is that separate and apart?
Do they? So no, they wouldn't. Our, the targeted EL intervention is a completely separate block from from core tier one reading instruction.
So similar to what we said for the other intervention piece, like the skills are carrying over, but not necessarily being observed in that. It's not part of that same walkthrough system.
No. I think I understand what you're saying. Yeah, no.
Thank you.
I think that's it for now. We can go on to to two or four. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Academic goal two and four are are math goals also up on the board, up on the wall to the left here. Here they are on the screen. Goal two is looking at fifth grade math again to 45%. And our interim goals, again, looking at two cohorts behind these fifth graders, the third graders who will be fifth graders in 2028. So again, a review of where we have been with our fifth grade math proficiency. Again, this goal is trending correctly. We had an increase of over two percentage points last, from last year to 2024. But this is off track. Again, school population proficiency looks at our students who are currently fifth graders, where we were just looking at that 13.7% for last year's cohort. So this is down 1.3%. The combined proficiency is 22.1%. We've talked about this and this is going to take you back a little bit, that fifth grade specifically math on STAR has consistently been five percentage points higher on STAR than ASA. So if you've been with us, it's been higher than what we've seen for ASA as a projection, but consistent. So between this and our DNA assessment, which was also at about 16, 17%. We still would be tracking for an improvement from last year's fifth grade scores on this, but certainly a work to do to be on track. And then again, our progress monitoring of our interim goal. Goals 2.1 and 2.2 are looking at third grade proficiency and minimum proficiency on STAR math. And so we are seeing an improvement that is trending correctly, but certainly not enough to, at this point, get to that goal of 36% or to lower the minimally proficient to 40%. Okay. And then finally, I'll skip down to goal four, goal four, eighth grade math. Here's on the screen, increasing from 12% to 45%. And our interim goals are around increasing proficiency, decreasing minimum proficiency for our sixth graders on STAR math. This is our one goal where from 24 to 25, there was actually a decrease from 15% to 13 and a half percent. So now, again, we have our kind of headline is up in the top right that this is trending away from the goal and off track. This is current eighth graders on the October STAR math assessment. Are combined, you can see the combined proficiency, not only is it down, but 7.8%. That's lower than even last year's ASA. Real quick, while we were in the inputs discussion, this cohort last year was lower in their math proficiency than last year's eighth graders. So this does seem to be a cohort that is maybe a little further behind. Obviously, 7.8 is lower than last year's ASA. But with eighth grade math, we do see that there is very, this is not one that is inflated and you would expect to be even lower. In some cases, we've seen the eighth grade ASA scores higher, if not slightly, but higher than what we were seeing for STAR. So just a little color for that combined proficiency. And then finally, our sixth grade interim goals. This is a cohort, last year, we talked about our fifth grade cohort as being a cohort that was behind proficiency wise over some of the other cohorts. Obviously, this and now our sixth graders. And so we're saying that this is off track, even though it is slightly trending in the right direction, slightly. We're saying that this is off track because this this cohort is coming in further behind than their previous year's cohort, which we are, which we had our baseline goals. So our numbers for what we're measuring, the kind of the to and from, the 19.7 and 28%. That 19.7% was last year's cohort. So we're trying to increase from last year's cohort, but this cohort is coming in even further behind than the previous cohort, which is why we're saying that school is off track. And then that brings us to our inputs.
So though Ms. Guston will get more into the inputs and I'll chime in. These key inputs are in regards to heavily leaning onto tier one improvement. But then we also will share what we're planning to do for supplemental experience in math at the end.
Just making sure I was on the right, if you saw how many different PowerPoints I have open right now. So really, I'm just going to go with the, this is the slide from goal four because this actually has all the key inputs that we listed for either goal two and or goal four. And so a couple of the ones that that are specific to math. The first one being the, our, our DNA platform for our essential standards assessments is a is a very robust assessment platform. So along with having those created essential standards assessments, it also has different assessment building options for teachers. And what's wonderful about it is that it allows not only to, you can select the 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 level of rigor of this, of of the particular assessment item. You can also select the assessment type so that we're able to really make sure. So getting to the the input of actually using DNA for those daily lesson exit tickets. So our kids get, for one, we can ensure that the exit tickets are assessing the right level of rigor aligned with the learning target. But they also get more exposure and experience in different assessment types on a regular basis. And then the other one that I already spoke earlier to the adjustments in the pacing guides to put those flex days throughout for reteaching. There was that question earlier about the reading intervention block and we definitely see, so in our master schedules, we also have a math intervention block. And and we we see a significant need to tighten that up to make sure that we're giving our schools good guidance on how to use that time effectively so that it's, so it can really help shift soon outcomes. So that is also in the works for us. But one of the biggest inputs, not just for math, but for all instruction is our our PLT practices. And so I want to spend a little bit of time speaking specifically to that. Through the professional learning that we've engaged in in the first part of the school year, we've now been able to implement these two key protocols, the weekly planning meeting protocol and the weekly data meeting protocol. And in that, you know, as you know, we have these pacing guides and unit plans that do some of the big picture work for it. So we need that protects our teachers' time to plan at the daily level, but we want to make sure that they're doing that as as strategically as possible. So these protocols come into play. So now that we have done pretty intensive training with principals and instructional coaches on these protocols, we're really putting into place this this cadence for PLTs. And and what you'll see on that calendar example is the PLT meetings that happen during the the day, during their planning period time. Because that's guaranteed every week. We have these early release Wednesdays. But for instance, like this Wednesday is is early release and it is a PLT day. But the next Wednesday is is not a PLT day. So if we want to do this work consistently, we have to utilize that time during the school day. So what you'll see is this, there's a lot of information on this calendar, but if you just look at Tuesdays, which is where we where we've where we want those times, we've identified Tuesday as the main day for PLT meetings, just keeps it consistent district wide. You'll see it alternates between a planning meeting and a data meeting. So one week, they are planning through the use of this protocol. One of the most, they're planning a daily lesson that is, you know, probably the most rigorous lesson of the week. And part of that then, along with the different components of that lesson, then they will come back to the next week and do a data meeting where they'll bring their exit tickets and they'll actually analyze the student work and identify gaps in learning. And so that way they can then plan a reteach. Part of that, so then at the bottom here, you'll also see in in prioritizing those school day planning times for this this process, this cycle, then gives those Wednesday early release times, those two hour chunks of times for for other really deep work that you can see a list of of there. But what I want to share next is, this is something that we have recently rolled out just in the last couple of weeks, this concept of a weekly data meeting tracker. And this comes, this is an example. And this comes, this is an example from one of our schools. It's not fully complete, but it gives you an idea of what our teams are doing. So after they have identified a specific lesson to teach and the standard, you'll see first that there is a place where they are indicating the percent of students who mastered it the first time through. And then this school, for one, they have a column for naming, what are the successes that you see? But one of the most important steps in the data meeting process is identifying the gap in learning. And we give them a sentence frame that students are not able to blank because they don't yet fully understand, or they don't yet understand blank. So balancing, and this comes into play huge for math because we see, one of the biggest gaps we see for students and for teachers is the conceptual understanding. We might know how to do the procedure, but we couldn't tell you why. So by having gap statements written like this, it focuses teachers on both. The, what do we need students to do and what do they need to understand in order to be able to do that? So they identify a gap statement, and then based off of of the gap statement and the percentage of students that were at mastery, they will decide on what type of reteach they're going to do, whether it's a model, which would be what you would do when there is, when there's a more significant gap or more students that didn't get it. If it is, if the gap is smaller, then you can take on the approach, call it a guided discourse, where they're analyzing different examples and looking at what might, you know, why is this problem right? Why do you think that this student did it correctly? And then the final part is they might actually also identifying the date that they will be doing this reteach. So these two pieces are, have been huge for us, have been a huge lift in getting our schools and our teachers to begin to work this way together. Knowing that it takes time to learn, our first expectation has been that that third grade math and sixth grade math in alignment with our interim goals, that those be the two places where we get this cycle solid first. Because part of this process requires a lot of pre-work for the instructional coach. They are pre-planning every one of these meetings. You know, and on most of our campuses, they have nine grade levels. So to expect them to pre-plan nine grade level meetings right off the bat is probably not a, not a good strategy. So they're practicing with rolling that out, and then we will expand into the other grade levels. I will tell you, in most of our schools, they are doing this with far more than just third grade and sixth grade math. And then the last thing I would say also with this particular practice and the PLTs, well, I'll tell you a couple of things more, but our teaching and learning team is also leaning in on this. Here you see a picture of us getting and going through training on how to coach coaches on these data meetings. And so we are doing the learning. And actually, just today, I believe, was the first time that all of our coaches and Ms. Sander and they all deployed out to different campuses to actually work side by side with the coach to plan and lead PLT meetings. Because this is new to us as well, but we've got to up our game and make sure that we're fully ready to support our instructional coaches and our principals with leading this consistently on their campuses. I feel like I'm forgetting something there. But I'll move into the last part with a couple of the other inputs. So this is an example here from DNA of a, of an exit ticket that I just went in and it took me about thirty seconds to create this, so super fast for teachers to be able to either access or create to make sure that they are assessing students at the right level of rigor. And then the last part too, going back to even, we didn't spend too much time talking about the pieces on the monitoring side of how are we, how are we really making sure that we're seeing this in action and supporting it? So a couple of things. So for one, our, we have a district instructional leadership team meeting every Monday from one-thirty to three-thirty. And every Monday, our team, which is our teaching and learning leaders, Dr. Battle and Dr. Portillo, we're pulling up the learning walk data. I think at last look, we have about six hundred fifty learning walk entries for the district. So that's giving us some really good data to see trends. And then we're pulling up whatever data is most relevant and looking for trends in order to make connections between what the students are, students' outputs are and what's happening in our classrooms to support that. But as much as we're out on campuses, we're not out there every day, all day. And so once a month, we also now do, we call them principal IC data review meetings, and these are on Zoom. We try to strategically schedule them at a timely place where we can get input from them before we are finalizing the information we're sharing with you. They are not only to help us with board reports, they're to help us get really intentional with reviewing our data. But we ask our, so this is just a snapshot. All of our schools give us input. So we ask about what strengths do we see in our ELA data, our math data? What gaps do we see? What implements are being implemented with fidelity? Or inputs are implemented with fidelity? What might not? And then we have a couple of extra questions here. So what have you been doing with IXL? And then what is your plan for December third, tomorrow, during PLT time? The questions might change from month to month depending upon the data, but this also gives us a lot more specific input from campuses. I will tell you from the questions that you're asking us, that's helping us to know what questions to ask campuses because we want to make sure, not only are we speaking accurately here about what is and isn't happening, but we want to make sure that information is driving our inputs and what we're doing. So if there are, so this information has to be, has to be useful and relevant for us as well.
Thank you. I think the biggest piece about our math approach is as we're improving our math tier one instruction, we definitely have a lot more work to do in math based on the student performance, but also the preparation that we have provided for our adults. We're further than we are in reading. Our math team, TNL team and math team is going to be going out to National Council of Teachers and Mathematics to also try to go out and get some more expertise support. Our goal would be that we would be able to find someone that has that same type of expertise as we have maybe with Jennifer Ashlock, but more so with math so that we can continue to get that additional growth. We do have some strong mathematicians and some people that deliver instruction well, but we need to be able to have some more robust learning for our adults. So it's an area that we acknowledge that we have further to go on. But we have invested in in having our TNL team be also coached on their coaching of the coaches. So that's really important as well. While I'll let Ms. Gustin continue to talk about, do you have anything else you want to share? Okay. All of those focuses are on tier one instruction. We have been talking at the executive team level, and then I know Mr. Polk was able to also look at our resources and working with our grants team to be able to start to develop a supplemental experience for our students that would begin at halftime. So that would be around January when we return back. And we are still working through all of the details of what that might look like. But we do know that it has to be more intense for, it has to be frequent. It has to be very directed and prescriptive because of the amount of time that we have between now and the assessment is shorter. Right? So again, this will be a supplemental experience for students. We will be happy to share more information about what that'll look like at our January meeting, but we do know that we have to do something in addition to what we're doing for tier one instruction because we're just that much further from that goal. So that'll be focused primarily on math. And it'll be targeting a very specific and small group of students based on their gaps. I'll open it up for questions.
Madam President, just a clarifying question here, and again, just as before, just appreciate the clarity and appreciate the clarity also of how campuses are using the data and responding to the data. And I think really powerful to have a data meeting where I can also collaborate with my peers and see who's doing what really well at my grade level. I think a question I have, knowing that we're in assessment season, tis the season to be testing children. How are the DNA assessments, which I know are standards aligned with the grade level, and then the STAR assessments, which are adaptive? How are? I know from our conversations that this is the first year we're using those DNA assessments. How are those assessments contributing to our strategy, if at all? Because I know this is the first year using them. And what is the hope for how they could contribute to our strategy as we continue on using them?
So I'll take the first stab at it. So as we're looking at that data as exec team, and especially in our adult meetings, we're seeing some also evidence that there might have been some testing environment type of issues, right? So we're trying a new assessment. So we are being steady to not make too many assumptions off of the initial testing, but now that we're more into it, we do believe that we'll be able to start making some more, some more, gain more information from them to be able to make more solid decisions. We do see, in some cases, it's very much aligned with STAR, the STAR results, even though STAR is adaptive. And then we see in some cases that it's not. So I don't know that we're ready yet to make some strong decisions based on that, but we do know that it could also be used for our exit tickets. And it's also helping us to determine, are we staying as a system? Generally speaking, on pace with our pacing calendars. So it is being used for that level. Do you want to keep? Add some more color to that?
Yeah, absolutely. Madam President, Board Member Frankowitz. One of the most interesting things, and this is a little, I think, breaking news for the principal data IC meeting, is the connection of the learning walk data and the achievement and figuring out where are those correlations? For example, for us as a district, I don't know if this is going to be nationwide, but structured student discourse observed in learning walks had, there was a strong correlation with student achievement. And this is my own kind of interpretation of that, is that you really can't fake the work that students are doing in the classroom when there's really good student work happening. And so this isn't the entirety of your question, but looking at what is working based on the learning walk data and student achievement, how can we look at that? And then also with site leaders, looking at our, this is new, so showing them how to use the DNA, especially our ICs, to be able to use the different functions. And I've really been pressing on response frequency and the matrix. So I went to Pastore specifically, shared that with them, and it really was like mind-blowing for some teachers and like, can we do this with our kids? Because I kind of went through how I would do an air analysis with them. So I think that that is the most useful impactful piece to DNA is the air analysis, since everyone is taking the same test with the same questions to see within a class, within a grade level, even the entire district, why are we missing these questions? What types of questions are we missing? Not just standards, but the item types. And then to be able to support students with that between assessments. And then also, Mrs. Gustin showed, using then the DNA item bank to give follow-up assessments to them and make sure now do we have it? And just to clarify, so both as a tool and as a like further information gathering
about what specifically is the gap that students have in this particular area?
Yes, and I can't, I can only speak for myself that I have had way greater use for the DNA assessment than last year to our synergy district benchmark assessment. I've personally been way happier with it in terms of the clarity of data and understanding what we need to do next in terms of, again, both standards, item types, and the level of rigor questions as well. DNA has given us a really clear picture in the data. So thank you all, seriously, for approving that. That was something that we approved back in the spring.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Of course I have some. I just want to name that I appreciate you all showing us the actual tools that are being used. So thank you for the detail. And thank you to our staff for submitting the data walk data. I know that we're asking a lot, and so we appreciate, or I appreciate you all submitting that data. Let's see. And then the supplemental experience for students, I appreciate that as well because I feel like now we're starting to align our resources to where the needs are at. And so for us to be investing in our students who need it the most, I truly appreciate that. And I don't have a question. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. All right. Next item on the agenda is public participation. We do not have any public participation this evening. Next item on the agenda is a superintendent's report, and I will pass it to Dr. Portillo.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, executive team, and Roosevelt community. In anticipation that we were going to have a very robust conversation about learning today, I do not have a superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm sure y'all appreciate it.
Other than we're working hard on learning.
Next item on the agenda is item four point zero two is board member updates. Does anyone have an update they would like to share?
I just know that this is our last meeting of this year of 2025 official, like, board meeting. So I just wanted to say Merry Christmas to everyone, wishing everyone a Happy New Year. Really, really proud of the staff, our team here, the superintendent, and all the executive team, all the principals, all the parents, all the students, everyone who is participating here in Roosevelt. I know it's a lot of work, and let's look into this new year as a new beginning and more opportunities for growth. So just wanted to share that gratitude, that love, and just say Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is our REA report. We would like to welcome Dr. Martha Thomas to the podium.
Madam President, governing board members, Dr. Portillo, our executive team, our RSD and REA community. I'm Martha Thomas, president of the Roosevelt Education Association. I put together, or we put together a PowerPoint, kind of accumulating of the different things that we've done in the last few months. Being REA, we appreciate and admire being recognized by the school board policy as the sole representative for all Roosevelt School District employees. That is such an honor for us to be able to help our coworkers. Next slide. As I mentioned, I am Martha Thomas. I am a social worker, proud social worker at Bernard Black Entrepreneurial Academy, where we are doing some great work, hard work, great work. These are some of our major accomplishments that we had put together through meet and confer from last year. We share this information with all of our staff, especially those that are wondering, you know, what is it that we work on through meet and confer? And so we try to put together a summary of what it is that we've done, what have we accomplished in in trying to get interest for more members to join us as well in helping with meet and confer. Some of the events that we did in the last few months in partnership with our Roosevelt PAC in working on our our canvassing, we knocked on over 5,000 doors. This included board members, it included some of our staff, our administrators, teachers. Many of our both certified and classified staff showed up. We had the social, everybody took part in it. And for six weeks, we were able to accomplish in that period of time of knocking on over 5,000 doors, which we had a lot of fun with. We battled the rain during that time. We also worked with All In Ed, many of their of their parents, which are our parents, also came out and helped us working on the override bond and trying to get information out to our staff. And many of our volunteers through the social events, we were able to kind of get that word out there. And we had quite a few people show up for for volunteering. Here are some pictures to the right. You have the picture of the group that showed up first for canvassing. To the left is the picture of what we ended up with, those who came out at the end. And like I said, it was a mixture of staff and our parent volunteers that came out. This was a group picture that was taken at our AEA office. With all associations, we put together one day that we all wanted to get together from associations through the state for everyone who was canvassing for their districts, for their bonds. And so we all came together with Secretary Fontes. He came and spoke to many of us in providing much encouragement and hope for what what's to come. These are a couple of our staff members from Sunland School, new members who joined during our blitz. We had a week in September where we just went at it at five different schools in making sure that all of our staff knew that they they could join if they wanted to. And so we had quite a few take that opportunity and do that. During our blitz, we visited all campuses at least one to two day site visits. We recruited 28 new members. We had 30 volunteer organizers involved that came out to help us to talk to our staff and and get new members to join her. We had new members who received PDs at AEA. All the different PDs that we offer there as well. Also receiving assistance with legal services and discounts by NEA as well. REA density was at 37% and we increased it by 40% or up to 40%. We currently have 360 total members to date. And with that, I wrap up. All of our benefits come from NEA, AEA, and REA, and the union is for us all. Any questions?
Just a shout out on this presentation, Dr. Thomas, you're flexing today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, and I appreciate REA for knocking doors and helping get an override pass. So thank you all for for that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, she may. Hold on one second. She has.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to REA for supporting all of our initiatives, especially our academic initiatives. And I know that our teachers are working really hard and REA continues to support us as administration in ensuring that we're raising the bar of our instruction and our learning for students. So I really appreciate that partnership and wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Well, you are welcome. Thank all of you for because we couldn't have that partnership without each one of you. Our kids are number one, so we're going to get them there.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Or I appreciate that. I don't know. Okay, we 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 my bad we. Next item on the agenda is four point zero four, which is Reinventing Roosevelt, and I will pass it to Dr. Portillo.
Thank you. I have a brief presentation in Reinventing Roosevelt. While we're very busy, we are also cognizant of time. So we wanted to highlight something that we're really proud of. And that was thanking again our voters for approving our override. And then last year, our bond, right? So we have lots of bond projects, our facilities, our playgrounds, our fields need to get worked on, and that all costs money. And to share, I know I I texted each of you a little bit of the information about how excited we were about the bond sale. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Polk to talk a little bit about our bond sale and then also our credit rating.
Thank you, Dr. Patel. This this was an exciting event, to say the least. As as you know, the voters approved us to issue $150 million of bonds. On November 20th, we did the first bond issuance, which was for $50 million. Wasn't sure what to expect with this. We we had to go through an interview process with Moody's, answer a a tremendous amount of questions, actually received some follow up questions that we needed to answer, but we maintained our same bond rating, which was a double eight bond rating, which was was better than we expected based on the closures of schools and and a little decrease in enrollment. But it spoke to the strength of the district's overall credit rating. We actually received a lot of interest from some institutional investors. What you see on the screen is basically a dashboard that Standards and Poor's gave to us for the bond issuance. The market opened at 7:45 on November 20th, and we sold $50 million with the bonds in an hour and a half. That that was staggering to me that there was that much interest at that point. But what was more staggering is if you can see it, I don't know if it shows up very well on these monitors, but at the top, we had $144 million worth of orders placed for our bonds. That was almost three times what was available, which meant there was a tremendous amount of interest in the bonds offered by our district, which spoke well to to our standing as as well as our rating. And so we had some some people invest, some institutional investors invest that normally do not invest in municipal bonds. One that comes from mine was State Farm. And they, we were told that they normally do not invest in municipal bonds. So they placed actually $36 million worth of orders for our bonds. So this bodes well for us as we move forward, as we go towards our our next bond issuance. To be in these portfolios means that that we will have literally no trouble selling our next our next set of bonds. But but we were very, very proud of of how this spoke of our district. We really appreciate the voters entrusting us to to make these investments in in these facilities for students. And it was it was quite an exciting time. It's basically like a watch party in our office, so. But that's pretty much, that's pretty much it.
Any question?
No questions, but I'll just say that I forgot it was bond day. And then I had a bunch of missed calls from Dr. Portillo, and I was a little nervous until I got the text message. So next time we do this, I should put that on my calendar. That's feedback for me.
It was it was really exciting because what that means is since we had more orders than we had available bonds to to sell because I I had asked for approval from you all to sell 50 million so that we didn't negatively impact the tax rate for our for our residents. What that means is that we already had very favorable rates because of our strong credit rating. But then we were also able to negotiate even better rates because we had more orders than available bonds to sell. And that means more money available for us to do more projects at our campuses for our students. And that's really exciting for us. So bottom line is more money going to our kids and a slightly lower impact to our tax rate, our taxpayers than we actually had promised. So we we overdelivered on our promise to our voters. So that's also really exciting.
Go team, go. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda items. And I know there's been a change, so I'll pass it to you, Dr. Portillo.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, executive team, and Roosevelt community. Based on administrative input, we'd like to make an amendment or request an amendment to item number 509. Item number 509 currently says that we are requesting approval. In the description, it says the we're requesting approval of requests for proposal RFP number 25 dash RFP 007. The recommended award for RFP number 25 RFP dash 007 is a multi term contract automatically renewed each year through December 2nd, 2025. That's today. The the error is that it should be beginning in December 2nd, 2025. So it's a clerical error. I'd like to make that amendment. And we'll make sure that we triple check so that we don't have that type of error in the future.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the change 5.09 beginning December 22nd, 2025?
So moved. Second.
It was moved by Penya and seconded by Castro Correia. Any discussion?
Just clarifying, it's beginning December 2nd.
Yes, beginning December 2nd. Yes, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item 6.01, Approval of the Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Revision. Number two, and it's by roll call vote. Is there a motion to approve the item?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dr. Frankelwitz, second by Castro Correia. Any discussion? Okay, with that being said, I'll pass it to Maria to perform roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam President. President, roll call vote for item 6.01 to approve the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget revision number two by roll call vote, starting with Dr. Michael Butts.
Aye, yes.
Ms. Victoria Castro Corral?
Yes.
Dr. Megan Frankelwitz?
Yes.
Dr. Ashley Hodge?
Aye.
And Mrs. Tatiana Benya?
Aye.
Item 6.01 approved with the completion of roll call vote of five.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is approval of policies that are listed in first and second read. Is there a motion to approve the policies? Second read.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Frankelwitz, second by Ms. Penya. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item. Oh, sorry, it was supposed to be roll call? No, okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 6.03, Approval of the Progress Monitoring Reports for Goals One and Three, and by roll call vote. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I second.
Motion by Castro Correia and second by Dr. Frankelwitz. Any discussion? I'll pass it back to Maria to perform roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam President. Roll call vote for item 6.03 to approve the progress monitoring report for academic goals number one and number three by roll call vote, starting with Dr. Michael Butts.
Aye.
Ms. Victoria Castro Corral?
Aye.
Dr. Megan Frankelwitz?
Aye.
Dr. Ashley Hodge?
Aye.
And Mrs. Tatiana Benya?
Aye.
Item 6.03 approved with the completion of roll call vote of five.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is approval of progress monitoring report, academic goals two and four by roll call vote. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I second.
Motion by Penya, second by Frankelwitz. Any discussion?
No discussion. I just want to name again just the intense amount of gratitude that I know the board has, I personally have around the amount of effort that has gone into not so much even adjusting the strategies, but truly just like making sure that the communication is clear and all board members, all team members are clear on the strategy and those next steps. I know as a board member, it makes me feel really confident going into this next round of data that one, I'm going to understand all of the things that we're doing, and two, that we'll be able to effectively monitor whether or not those strategies are working. So I just really deeply appreciate that and all of the time that was put into that communication. It just felt really clear today, all of the things that we're doing and all of the work that is happening. We knew that work was happening, but what the work was felt really clear today. So appreciate that.
I echo the sentiments, and I saw all of the board, they were shaking their head in agreement, so. I'll pass it to Maria to do the roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam President. Roll call vote for item 6.04 to approve the progress monitoring report for academic goals two and four by roll call vote, starting with Dr. Michael Butts.
Aye.
Ms. Victoria Castro Corral?
Aye.
Dr. Megan Frankelwitz?
Aye.
Dr. Ashley Hodge?
Aye.
And Mrs. Tatiana Benya?
Aye.
Item 6.04 approved with the completion of roll call vote of five.
Thank you so much. We don't have any information or discussion or executive session. And the moment we've been waiting for, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn, having concluded our business this evening?
I move that we adjourn, and I would also like to point out, we're under the two hour mark today.
Yeah.
Is is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Frankelwitz and seconded by Butts. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is done. Have a great evening.